Okay, please rise. 66th Regular Session of the 20th City Council is now called to order. invocation by Honorable Councillor Suset Daba, followed by the singing of the Lupang Hinirang and the Kagayan di Oro March, please rise.
Let us put ourselves in the Holy Presence of the Lord in the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen. Heavenly Father, we thank you for having this privilege of serving our city. We pray, Father, that as we discuss our agenda and craft policies for our city, we will always put the people's interest above our own. Remind us, Father, that we are in this position not to be served, but to serve the public, just as Christ, who is King, came not to be served, but to serve and ultimately die on the cross to save us. We also pray, Father, that we will uphold what is moral and rational. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. In the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Please be seated. Mrs. Secretary, please do the roll call.
Honorable Jocelyn B. Rodriguez, City Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer. For the First District Councillors: Honorable Agapito E. Roberto G. Swan, Honorable Roger G. Abadai, Honorable JR Pasqual, Honorable Aimé Rose P. Moreno, Honorable Romeo V. Calizo, Honorable George S. Goaking, Honorable Jose PPS Abu Jr., Honorable Malvern I. Espersia. For the Second District Councillors: Honorable Ibuna Yasin B. Imanu, Honorable Maria Lodes Esgaani, Honorable Jolene Mercedes Elbalaba, Honorable James K. Judev II, Honorable Ayann Mark Kyunakaya, Honorable Edgar S. Cabanlas, Honorable Christian Rustico M. Atchas, Honorable Suset G. Magtahas Daba. For the ex-official members: Honorable Yan Lam S. Lim, Liga ng Mga Barangay President, and Honorable Kenneth John Di Sakala, City Escape Federation President. There is coram, Madam Presiding Officer.
Corum is hereby certified. Good afternoon, Councillors. Good afternoon, fellow Kagayanans who are watching this afternoon. Our friends from media, those who are visitors who are here today. Mayong Hapon. So, mayong hapon. Okay, ah. So, ah, can we proceed, majority? Majority floor leader, Attorney Councillor Edgar Cabanlas, you have the floor.
Salamat kayo, Madam Presiding Officer. Vice Mayor Bibut Rodriguez, and members of the City Council, people from the media, friends from Kagayan dior, in the sitting in the gallery. Our people of our city Kagayan dior who are watching us in their respective social media platforms. Good afternoon. Ah, may I move him to the chair?
May I?
Balus lang po.
Kauha, halimbawa.
May I move Madam Chair to dispense the reading of the minutes of the previous regular session of this council on January 15, 2024.
Any second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move the proven second final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Before the special report, Councillor Joey Abu requested for...
Councillor, Attorney Joey Abu, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. Mayong Hapon sa akong mga kauban dari sa 20th City Council. Itong mga bisita, sa media, ug sa tanan naglantaw, subli mayong hapon. Madam Presiding Officer, I stand here this afternoon to make a privilege motion. The past few days or a week, more than a week, there has been na may mga mga panghintabu di nato ikalimod, mga politikanon nga kalihukan. And, ah, this involves the member of the minority and particularly the minority floor leader. And, ah, some of the members as well of the minority for the past few months or perhaps a year have noticed that, ah, there are very critical and serious issues to be dealt with or have dealt, have been dealt with already. But, ah, we noticed that the minority floor leader who is supposed to be representing the minority does not represent the interest of the minority anymore. And, ah, just what happened last week, I think, if I'm not mistaken, or the previous week rather, two weeks ago, ah, gave us the the signal and the siguro nakahuna-huna ang mayuria sa minority. Na, since there is, there was already a declaration of the minority floor leader that he is already detaching, although not official, from the minority, then I think we will be, we are now constrained to, um, fill, replace our minority floor leader considering such circumstance. We do not have anything against him, but, ah, we would like and wish to still, even though, like I've said with my colleagues here, that even though if we are all part of the majority, we should and should never sacrifice fiscalizing. So, that is the job, the duty of the minority and we are not a minority for the purpose of, ah, going against the programs and projects of the administration. But we just want that, ah, among katuyuan lang, na kung kayuhan, di maginato babagal. Kuyogme sa administrasyon. Ang amo lang katuyuan po na kung namanggani, labi ng mga dagko maiskutanan, maiskutan o ginsakto, umamhim usha, maimplementaros sa insakto nga pamahagi. Therefore, Madam Presiding Officer, I make, I make a privilege motion to declare the position of minority floor leader vacant.
Majority floor leader, you have the floor, please. Yes, Councillor Roger Abadai? Are we, ah, yeah, second muna. Muna muna, second, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Mag-second sata.
It's emotional to...
Yeah, any second?
Seconded by Councillor Aga and Councillor Ivy.
Okay, so Councillor, is there any manifestation or comments, Councillor Roger Abadai?
Yes, Madam Chair. I was perplexed with the, ah, proposal of the one member of the minority, Councillor Jupeep's Abu, the change guard of their minority floor leader. Now, Madam Chair, we'd like to clarify the status of the minority floor leader now and its member. The status, because as of now, the counting of the majority is still the same and it should belong to, belong to the minority. And I do not know if that is a valid reason, kontroversial issue, that would be a valid reason for changing the guard, changing the position. So, to be fair, we would like also to lift this minority floor leader and its colleagues to, hey, maybe still, Madam Chair, if was really the, are they amenable or, ah, to explain their status as of today? Are they in the minority, still in minority, or what group? Thank you very much, that's my query.
Okay, ah, the first one who raised her, she says, is Attorney, Councillor Attorney Joey Abu. You have the floor. Then Councillor Aimé Moreno.
I understand the statement of the good Councillor Abadai, Madam Presiding Officer, but, ah, if you katu siya, what I said a while ago is just laying the premise. Now, is it a valid reason for us to do that? Could be, why? Because we already lost trust and confidence with our minority floor leader and that's a valid reason. That's a valid reason. Because if he still belongs to the minority, then, although again, I have mentioned a while ago that it was not yet official that he belongs to the majority already, but as to that question, that is not our dilemma anymore. If he will be accepted by the majority, then well and good. But if there is no acceptance from the majority, then technically, he would still be part of the minority. But, what, what is put into question here, Madam Presiding Officer, is the leadership of the minority, which some of the members is not already satisfied because kita manato, na nagdeklara siya publicly, ano. Is it, is it the valid process to do it? Probably not, but an ordinary mind can say that he is already not, ah, he does not want anymore to be a part of the minority. So, ang mga member po sa mayuria, nagunapod na, opili na po kaganan sa mua kay, in fact, na namam po kay deklarasunin mo, di amo na lang sa kampulihan. Kay, for the longest time, Madam Presiding Officer, like I mentioned a while ago, we've noticed, um, some, some of measures that we had, especially kanang mga daggo, members of the minority were not even conferred to. As to what action? Kami na lang ang mag-sturya, kay di man may storya ang sa leader. In fact, he did not go with us, but that's okay, that's part of democracy. But, angamo lang is, di lang naman siguro, yapun siguro sa, di namang gisa interesado sa minority, kaiyaman na nga involusion. So, we would like to choose our own, if given a chance, to choose our minority floor leader. And that, and I think as, para yasang majority, if you have lost trust and confidence with your leader, you can do so by voting as well. And that's what we are trying to propose now, to, to move that deceit of the minority leader be declared vacant. If there should be any objection, which there was none a while ago when, ah, when I made the motion, then it is presumed that the incumbent minority floor leader is not opposing to that. That's all, Madam Presiding Officer.
Okay, thank you very much, Councillor Attorney Joey Abu. Yes, Councillor Aimé Moreno, you have the floor.
Yes, Madam Chair, mayong hapon, ug sa akong mga kauban sa 20th City Council, ug sa ato ang mga bisita. Actually, my sentiments have been shared by Councillor Joey Abu, but in relation to the statement of Councillor Roger Abadai, um, kininga pag-vote sa bagong minority floor leader does not really rely on the political stand of the sitting minority floor leader. Regardless of where, ah, if he had shifted his position or not, it's the mere fact that among the minority, they are given, we as a member of the minority are given the option to choose who among the minority will be the next minority floor leader, which is privileged for the minority. Kana lang, Madam Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Councillor Attorney, Majority Floor Leader, Councillor Attorney Edgar Cabanlas.
Ah, Madam Chair, I would like to point out that in, on issues like loss of confidence of any of the officers of the City, as of City Council, that is not debatable. We go directly to voting, they will go directly to voting. There is no debate allowed on that because loss of confidence. Ulay makargio na, ngaikomelaki na. So, there be, ah, there is a motion to...
This already, it's already seconded.
Certainly seconded.
Any objection?
Unless there is an objection, then they have to go, they have to vote. We will not, we will not interfere in their voting.
Okay. Do you have to vote? Okay, Councillor Ayann Mark Nakaya.
Per process of, ah, order, Madam Presiding Officer. Ah, remember that, ah, we are calendared in a manner that, ah, there is a sequence of our agenda. So, in other words, the proper motion first is for the transposition. We transpose the new item proposed by Councillor Abu.
Then?
And then, meaning, the item number one will go down to number two. So, the proper motion is for the transposition of the new item as item number one. Because we cannot, ah, in any manner, in the, in a parliamentary, during special report, consider any motion.
Okay, so is there any objection? That is, ah, we have to change the minority floor leader, so that is the first motion that we have to consider. So, if there is this motion, then it's already seconded, any objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
With that, Madam Chair, I move to, ah, the majority would like to move, to adopt this motion and consider that as item number one or propose resolution number 2024-364, or 365.
Any second? Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Ah, just a reminder to the minority on other, on the, on the other matters later on, please admit the names of the replacement of the minority floor leader and other officers. We will take that up during the other matters.
Okay, this will be discussed on other matters, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so let's proceed, Majority Floor Leader, Councillor Edgar Cabanlas.
Item number one, item number two would be, ah, oh, special.
Special report.
Special report, proportion, Madam Chair.
Yes.
The first reporter is Councillor James Judev Au, Au Berni. Siya pa yutlang, huh? Yutlang kay. Ah, the first, the reporter is Councillor Abadai re-illegal mining operations in the hinterland. Number two, Councillor Espersia Berni re-taxicab operations in the city and Councillor General Romeo Calizo on parking. Okay, that would be...
Okay, let me call, yeah, Councillor Roger Abadai, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Majority Floor, our honorable Presiding Officer, ah, Vice Mayor Jocelyn Rodriguez, my esteemed colleagues in the 20th City Council, people who are watching us virtually and physically, primidia, my friends, mayong hapon sa tanan. This representation has received a letter from Clean Row Manager, Engineer Armin Quinka based on the informants, ah, informants, their informants with regards to the alleged illegal mining operation by Chinese nationals at barangay Tumpagon, ah, this city. According to the complaint, the concerned citizens reported the following details: The alleged Chinese nationals were accompanied by a certain Kagawat in Tumpagon, Kagmat, Angelin Kagmat, an elected barangay official of Tumpagon, acting as a gold buyer and negotiator for land surface area related to the potential illegal mining activity. Second, Kagawat Kagmat is considered as untouchable because of his romantic partner holds the position of detachment commander in the military present in the area, special process assigned near the area. That the violators have contacted from Lumbia Police Station providing advance notice to cease illegal operation during government agency and monitoring and... and monitoring and inspection. The alleged illegal mining activity by Chinese nationals is spearheaded by an individual named Mr. Xian with his interpreter identified as Mr. Patrick Lam. And the workers comprised of residents from the bow and locals in the area, including guards, heavy equipment, operation, and drivers. So, during the inspection by the Mines and Geoscience Bureau, MGB, Region 10, together with Clean Row, there were traces of extraction along existing river. I think that picture, that picture. That is 300 meters away from Sintra, sa Barangay Yor, sa Karmin. Near the detachment and... So, dolar kayo 300 meters away. So, there were traces of extraction along existing river inside the boundary of Barangay Tumpagon. Almost 1 kilometer ang kanang nice kabit on ano. Then, there was no presence of heavy equipment in the vicinity. According to barangay captain, yang giibitar, blasa kaila, sa mga tao, iya kunu giabog. Di hayes committee. Several individuals like local residents in the area were seen using hydraulic water pumps. They promptly evacuated, carrying the equipments upon the team's arrival at the subject area. Several forest, trees, and other vegetation in the area were cut down and adversely affected by illegal mining activity. Kani mga kahoy nga iligipamutol, mausina ilang ibabag sa dalan para ang mga inspector unay magban, magradikasulod. So, a portable alleged deck gold was planned, was observed at an estimated distance of 150 meters from the illegal area of mining. So, last Wednesday, this committee, this representation, Committee Environment, held a meeting and invited all the barangay captain, barangay kagawat, and the station commander of Lumbia and other departments concerned, MGB, and including the ILG. So, other department. So, listening to the statement, explanation of the barangay captain and kagawat is very inappropriate and very flimsy. Imagine, he invited the suspects and he did not know who are these people. Wala niya ma... Wala niya ma-blatter, wala siya mag... And there's no effort of asking assistance from other agency like the PNP. So, iyalang gi papauli. So, very... procedural. So, when we asked also the explanation of station commander, I think Major Flores, the station commander, whether he conducted an investigation on that matter. He said he was in the area, but considering that there were no more people around, he did not care to go deeper in the investigation. Although he has knowledge that there were illegal mining incurred in that area. So, wala lang niya... So, other reports from the MGB, they supported, explained that there was really illegal mining. So, Madam Chair and my colleagues, I am... My prayer is that... This afternoon, in addition, this morning, I received another information from Clean Row that there were two bakho's. Bakho's na cited dito sa the same area, Tumpagon, reported by the barangay captain, at least in Leo, Krasia. So, the presence of bakho in boundaries sa Opul, Kagayan de Oro, Tumpagon, and Lannaw. Accordingly, na kunos la permit is issued by the municipality of Opul. So, muna nga, I am placing the Presiding Officer and the members of the 27th City Council that in order to put an end on this illegal mining in our jurisdiction, there is necessity that we have to investigate in aid of our legislation. I am asking and proposing that a declaration of ad hoc committee composed of committee chairman or any member, like the committees barangay first, headed by Counselor Alm Lim, committee on agriculture, committee on climate change, and committee on public safety and order. And any member of the council will join us so that we will be able to address this illegal mining now recurring in our jurisdiction. So, that's my prayer, Madam Chair and my colleagues. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Counselor Roger Abadai. So, refer to the different committees mentioned. Oh, creation. No. Creation, yeah. Creation of that hook and then with the different committees. As... Yeah. So, that will be tackled on other matter. I hope we mean business this time. Okay. So, the next one is... Any comment regarding the privilege speech? Hala. So, the second one is Counselor Bernis Sparsia. You have the floor. Are you comfortable sitting in front of me? You are? Because na post mo kay balinkas likod, and I will be very happy to transfer you at the back if you wish.
No problem.
Okeraka. Okay.
Magana, may hapon ka na tanan. Dagdansalamat, Madam Presiding Officer. This is just very short. Kabayan kini sa atong mga taxi drivers lately. We all know that our taxi is the number one preferred transportation, especially sa mga bisita na to dari sa dakbayan sa Kagayan de Oro. If they're not familiar, Madam Presiding Officer. Also, taxi drivers are the number one frontliners of our tourists since they will be the one facing and suggesting some unfamiliar places in Kagayan de Oro. Also, our taxi driver should be the number one most trusted person sa atong mga bisita dari sa dakbayan sa Kagayan de Oro. And kabalusad ta nga, ang atong dakbayan Kagayan de Oro is the number one destination sa atong mga bisita labin na kumusulod sila sa Northern Mindanao. So, kita gayod ang number one... What ilapang gingo, number one hub. Nakita tanan musulod ang gateway to Northern Mindanao. Now, the problem is lately, I receive a lot of problems regarding our taxi drivers. Kuhaon lang na kuning tulok, major nga naitabo lately, magulang gud. Ang isa, Madam Presiding Officer, is during last December. Una, though allegedly pamalitan ang gawa mangimbestigan, puro ramani post from personal na mga Facebook page, isadiha ang usak kapasahero na grabe ang kahadlok kay mora nagitao, naglumba ang taxi driver. Ha, katulod do sila hapit nabanga. Oga nakulbaan sila, kana sila ibitbit nga infant. Tapos, pag-abot nila sa drop point, nasoko pa kay wala do si panukli. Nagdagan-dagan pa daw ang ilahangs ang yangyaya na manday panukli. Pasuko-suko pang taxi driver. Sila tao na kuyawan. Ikadua, na iusak kapasahero nga nag-uban sa iyahang ginikanan nga gikan na dialisis. Pauli na tana unta sila, apan ang driver niinsist nga muagi salain dalan. Pero ningon ang pasahero nga ayaw lang kay basig layo kay dito. Madat an misa mumpliti dari lanta sa normal na dalan. Nasuko ang driver kay di siya ganang kay traffic doggy panaugnya ang maong pasahero. Na taon galuya pa ang iyahang kauban o iyahang ginikanan kay gikan na dialisis. Ikatulung nga incidente, usan na po ka taxi driver ang gerekla mo kay na tingala tao ngang medyo tipsi na ang pasahero. Na tingala siya, gidala siya sa motel. May nalanggaling pagkita niya sa room boy. Medyo nakabantay siya, o nagsumangil dayon do ang taxi driver nga. Di lang niya ipasulod sa motel, ni shortcut lang do sila atong dalan. These are just three major concern, Madam Presiding Officer, sa aning mga naitabo sa atong mga taxi drivers. I know ang isa, ako gipaconfirm katong namili o pasahero gi... Gipato do sila sa LTPR, binagat tubang sila sa mga taxi driver. Nahadlok siya kay dagan kay kauban ang taxi driver. Nagpinirmahay na lang sila o gipasetol. Pero hadlok ayos sa naitabo. Ah, may mga bagong app karoon, but I'm not promoting this. I just want to emphasize nga, ang one besting lang aning app, do medyo mahal siya because tungo sa safety feature ni ini. Makita ni mo sa app, ang mga dagway sa driver, asa mo padalong ang taxi, oga kinsa ang mga tagi... Maklaro gud ni mo. Di lika ma balaka kung imong ipakuwa imong anak. Ipato ni mo sa linglo kay makita man ni mo ang dagan kana may GPS. Then again, makita po't ang detail sa sakyanan sa taxi o sa dagway sa taxi driver. I just want, Madam Presiding Officer, my prayer is matoni sa appropriate committee because I want to propose an ordinance on this. Na tana ang mga taxi mas pabutangan panatoong mga information sa taxi na idagkong ID, I don't know lang subject for styling palang ni. Na makita gud mismo sa tubangan o sa mga likod nadapit ang mga dagway sa mga taxi driver. Para in kaso o nga sila i-doubt, they could have taken a picture or data sa maong driver para atis naman ilang ma-send kini sa ilahang mga parents nga na balaka. Ah, ah, komprayer again, Madam Presiding Officer, i-hatag kini sa committee para may sugatan ni akong gustong na ordinance. Dagdansalamat, Madam Presiding Officer.
Thank you very much, Counselor Bernis Sparsia. Yes, refer to the committee of Counselor Romeo Calizo. Usan lang, di ba? Okay. Thank you very much. The next one is... Ah, Counselor Romeo Calizo, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good afternoon to my esteemed colleagues and our guests. My special report is all about one prime cause, one of the prime causes of traffic in the city. And it is parking, Madam Chair. So... About more than a week ago, a former classmate of mine in the infantry school, now a big week in the international economic community, visited me, and he said, "I'd like to invest in Kagayan de Oro, especially on tourism prospects." But he provided me with an observation. And traffic do sa Kagayan de Oro is terrible na gud. And one of the prime causes is parking. We have Republic Act 4136, or the Land Transportation and Traffic Code of the Philippines, which first identifies areas where parking is prohibited. And it also provides for a requirement that all vehicles traveling along roads must be registered. And in Kagayan de Oro City, we have the City Ordinance 10551-2007 as its implementing ordinance. Also, we have Republic Act 6541, or the National Building Code of the Philippines, which requires parking spaces in all office, residential, and commercial buildings. However, Madam Chair, the law is silent as to whether the procurement or buying vehicles has a limit. In fact, if you're capable of buying 100 vehicles, there's no limitation whatsoever provided for by law. And so, in Kagayan de Oro City, as per my research, there is an average of on a 24-hour round-the-clock monitoring, we have an average of 200,000 vehicles traveling around the city every day. And that now explains the traffic. Now, despite all these limitations provided for by law, Madam Chair, wag iapun. Ang ma-registered vehicles, there are so many unregistered vehicles flying around the city. And of course, if we go to all buildings, office, commercial, or residential, ang mga parkinganan in tawon, isa man ang ipa-comply sa obo. But many residents buy more than one vehicle. That's why, if you go through all the roads, ang parking is agasa na lang yun. And I can provide you some pictures just like this. That is the crossing coming from the main road, the highway going to Camp Evangelista. I intentionally got the video on a weekend para... You imagine during weekdays, unsa good ni ka busy, tanik ang traffic. Kini, it was widened for the purpose of having a wider passage. Pero ang both sides, gigamit naman ang parkingan. Also, in other areas here, just like here, Burgos Consolación. Wag iapun. Both sides are being used for parking. Other areas, please. Kini, weekend, gani, on a Sunday, still a discapistrano. Wag iapun. Ang mga sides are being used for parking. So, in short, Madam Chair, my point is tungo kay, maginato ma-enforce, tungo kay wala na may lain nga parkinganan available for the city. Makati has solved its traffic problem because they solved the parking problem. But since they had the money, they went underground. You go to G4 in Glorietto Complex, going to Landmark. They have a high-rise building used for parking. Pero mas guapo gud to ilang underground parking because it accommodates more. In Trinoma SM North Complex, they went a bit underground, but they went more on the high-rise building to provide parking services for their constituents. In Kagayan de Oro, matutag uptown, part of the roads there ilang gi pinturahan para lang makahatag oga parking spaces para sa ilang mga clients. We have condominiums there in uptown. The law said, for every condominium unit, there should be... They should provide one parking space. But in our condominiums, they do not follow that. But since it takes a lot of time to provide for a plan to correct this, Madam Chair, I think we can copy what some other cities did to provide parking spaces. That will not... We can alleviate the pressure of given by these parked vehicles. that cause traffic in the city. For example, the post office, for example, is not being used very, very on an optimum use. Pwede nato ni buhatan bitaw parking space, some parts of Divisoria. So that we can entice investors in coming in, especially those being annoyed by our traffic. Especially that one caused by parking, madam chair. So, with this, I'd like to refer my special report, my concern, to the Committee on Planning, madam chair. And probably jointly with the Committee on Public Works. Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Ian Mark Nakaya, you have the floor.
Thank you, madam presiding officer. I'm 100% supportive and joining the cause of Councilor General Romeo Caliso as regards his proposal to be flexible in our manner of administering the affairs of traffic management. It can be told that the traditional is just providing space along the roads. But because of the number of units flying over our roads with limited spaces and narrow areas, madam presiding officer, we can, we could no longer provide the appropriate parking spaces. That is why we need to go vertical. And the proposal of Councilor General Romeo Caliso is appropriate. And as he mentioned, that there are public properties which are running idle in the areas of Divisoria. And we can even enlist and invite investors and do perhaps PPP. Or just invite investors from the private sector who are already allowing parking spaces in their area and to establish itself as a vertical parking area. Because like, for example, the Pilay's fronting cathedral already provided a certain area, but to a limited extent. Meaning, maybe perhaps they can go and provide for 15, 20. Another Pilay's area behind, what do you call this? Chain of stores in Divisoria. Another area in Corales, J R Borja. But then again, they are limited, madam presiding officer. Let's go vertical and let's modernize the administration of our traffic management. And I support fully. May I ask also that the leading committee would be traffic, that of Councilor Romeo Caliso. I'll join him as the co-chair on the planning for the furtherance of the intention of this proposal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilor Ian Mark Nakaya, refer to committees, planning and public utilities. Okay, thank you very much. Majority floor leader, Attorney Edgar Cabralas, you have the floor.
We go to our business ready. Item number one, omnibus motion one and two. May I request that, please read.
For omnibus approval, item one and item two. Item one, proposed ordinance number 2024-364, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Aoi representing the City Government of Cagayan de Oro to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement with the Department of Agriculture, Regional Field Office 10, represented by its Regional Executive Director, Karlin C. Coliado, CPA, covering the latter's grant of one unit hand tractor, multi-cultivator for the Quiapo Palalan Farmers Irrigators Association Incorporated under the terms and conditions stipulated in Damoa attached her two. Item two is proposed ordinance number 2024-365, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Aoi representing the City Government of Cagayan de Oro to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement with the Department of Agriculture, Regional Field Office 10, represented by its Regional Executive Director, Karlin C. Coliado, covering the latter's grant of one unit pump and engine set for the Madasigon Farmers Cooperative and one unit corn shiller for the Balubal Integrated Social Farmers Association Incorporated under the terms and conditions stipulated in Damoa attached her two.
Madam Chair, may I request, Councilor Mark Ian Nakaya be recognized.
Councilor Ian Mark Nakaya, you have the floor.
Move for the approval of these items.
Any second, objection. I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second, objection. I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item three, proposed ordinance number 2024-366, authorizing the Honorable City Mayor Rolando Aoi representing the City Government of Cagayan de Oro to enter into and sign the memorandum of agreement with the Department of Health Center for Health Development Northern Mindanao, represented by its director, four, Jose Arlecona Junior, since recovery, the construction of the new Balubal Super Health Center located in Barangay Balubal, the city under the latter's Health Facility Enhancement Program under the terms and conditions stipulated herein. May I request, Councilor Maria Ludis Gani, be recognized, madam chair.
Councilor Maria Ludis Gani, you have the floor.
May nga pun ka natutunan, I move for the approval of proposed ordinance number 2024-366.
Any second, objection. I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second, objection. I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item four, proposed ordinance number 2024-367, adapting the herein qualification standards for appointment to the position of the City Government Assistant Department Head, two. Assistant City General Services Officer. Item three, City 24, under the plantalia of the Office of City General Services Officer, Pursuant to Civil Service Commission Number Six, Series of 2026, 2026. Series of 2026. Then I wrote, series of 2024, who under?
2026.
2016.
Okay.
Series of 2016, which amounts to six, which amount 634 of the 2017. Oh, did you say, ah, okay. Series of 2023, which amount 634 of the 2017 omnibus rules and on appointments and other human resource action, actions. May I request that Councilor Yan Lam Lim be recognized.
Councilor Yan Lam Lim, you have the floor.
Madam Chair, may nga pun, everything is under, I move for the approval of ordinance number 2024-367.
Second, objection. I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second, I don't hear anybody saying second. Second, objection. I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second, objection. I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item number five, proposed ordinance number 2024-368, approving the application of Mr. Victor P. Cabeltes for a permit to conduct a two wins hack fight on February 14, 2024, at the Endag Square Garden, City of Rumboy, Barangay Endag, this city. May I request, Councilor Roger Abada be recognized.
Councilor Roger Abada, you recognize.
I move for the approval of these ordinance, considering that it has met the requirement under Section 79 of ordinance, there be, shall be allowed once a month for a duration exceeding two days on duly licensed cockpit.
Very clear, ha.
As also recommended by the City Legal Office, that the ordinance is in order.
Fiesta sa Valentines? Okay, so, any second, objection. Okay, objection, objection. Okay, I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second, objection. Another objection. I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item number six, proposed ordinance number 2024-369, approving the preliminary subdivision development plan of the Cagayan de Oro resettlement and socialized housing project six, seeders ship, seeders ship six located in Barangay dos Solihyun, the city with an area of 186,995.25 square meters, containing 584 lots under PD 20, 220, as applied for the fall by the City Government of Cagayan de Oro, represented by our City Mayor Rolando Aoi. Move for this approval, madam chair.
Second, objection. I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second, objection. I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item seven, proposed ordinance number 2024-370, approving the development permit of the Summerville Two Socialized Housing Project located at Barangay Lumbya, the city with an area of 28,743 square meters containing 323 lots under PD, under BP 220, as applied for by the Liberty Land Corporation, represented by Ms. Rosabel Villanueva. Move for this approval, madam chair.
Second, objection. I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yeah, Councilor Romeo Caliso, you have the floor, I'm sorry.
Just an inquiry, madam chair. Because I observed, it's my personal observation, that one of the causes also of traffic in Cagayan de Oro is the growing subdivisions.
Yeah.
So may I ask if, in, before, at the committee, are this considered the effect to traffic? Just like, are the provisions for, say, setback or other provisions relative to urban development really considered? Because if I, I've been to, in my, in my trip to Takurong City, going to Jansan, I see a very big disparity between how they construct their subdivisions as to here in Cagayan de Oro. As sa ilan dito, ang subdivision, layo. Napai ilang setback na iparking spaces before the highway. Here in Cagayan de Oro, ang gates of division, naaan naman na sa dalan, madam chair. So my question is, are this really being considered very seriously before we approve this? Because of course, we should not think only now, we should think about 10, 20 years from now. And second, madam chair, is this referred to the CLUP? Because the creeping of, the urban creeping is very fast. Yet, we don't know if other facets of government, of governance are being affected, just like other interests in agriculture, economic development, and the rest, madam chair. So, just my simple questions to...
Okay, thank you very much, Councilor Romeo Caliso. Yes, majority floor leader, Attorney Edgar Cabralas.
This is BP 220, which is socialized housing project of our City Government. And you know, socializing, we need that. We have a backlog of about 30,000 units. And this is also in compliance with the requirement of the law that all subdivision developers of high-end and economic should put up their socialized housing. We're happy that subdivision developers comply with this. Now, with regards to this traffic, it's very far. Torinis layo kisintanan. Layo kitinga, tuantos, unahan begin doon, dito sa. Summerville, unahan begin diya, Lumbya, unahan begin dito sa. And it is only around two hectares, madam chair. So, yes, traffic is the problem, but I think everything has been considered before approving this by the Office of, by, by Chud, also the City Development, City Planning Office. Mungkin na atong problema ang traffic, but we cannot stop. As I said, we cannot stop the development because there is a problem with traffic. That is the problem of the City Government to solve the traffic. Not be putting up all these development projects that we have. Sa ako pagtanaw, bitaw ka na dia sa Iza. When Iza was, we complain about people complaining about Iza nga grabe ka traffic. Dili ka move ang traffic. But then, naon itubok ka ng mga bonifacio, tubok yun mga distagig, payong dito sa. Karo-karo yu arang-arang naman, ang dagan special na kadagan ang mga subdivision, mga tagas, mga building na, mga condominium, arang-arang naman traffic. Because the solution here is not to stop all this development, but to manage traffic. It's the problem of the government to put up the infrastructure to solve traffic. Kayo munatong buhatol nga, dito mungunong tag issue dining mga development, kini atong mga kwan, because of traffic. I cannot, I mean, mura legalisod ako gunahon na. So I think, for example, karun dia karun sa uptown, na traffic, problema ang traffic, kadagan na kainin po yun. Por ko imutan ang karun, medyo arang-arang yun po, kayo na may gamani sugayo. So, and then, let us put up the proper infrastructure. Ung kulang kita sa dalan, tanganatugan na. Si, kinalang kita diya mga Uber passer, whatever, mga flyover. Now, this particular, this particular application is in compliance of the requirement of the law that should put up this socializing program. Paglayo yun yun kayo sa natunan, madam chair, layo yun yun, still not actually. I don't know if it will affect traffic, but this is part of big project of Liberty Land. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilor, Attorney Edgar Cabralas. Okay, Councilor Romeo Caliso. Okay, let us proceed, majority floor leader.
Move to approve, madam chair.
Any second, objection. I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second, objection. I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Other matters, may I request, madam chair, the movement of that motion to vacate the position of the chairman of the committee, the chairman of the minority. And, huh? For, yeah, for inclusion, madam chair, may I move for to include in our, in today's agenda, items eight, nine. Aduk ni, Councilor Abada. Okay, so that would be the motion, madam chair.
Okay, any second, objection. I hear none, motion is hereby carried.
Item number eight, proposed solution number 2024-596, confirming the election of Councilor, who's the Councilor?
May, may I move, madam presiding officer, that we'd like to confirm the election of Councilor Ian Atchaz as minority floor leader.
Councilor Ian Atchaz is the new minority floor leader of the city council, twenty city council. In relation to proposed solution number 2024, thus 595, declaring vacant the position of a minority floor leader of the city council. We will not intervene in the, in the election of, so there be a motion now.
So, so may I ask, let me clarify again, this is in conformity, what the minority decides is confirmed by the majority.
Yes.
So that, because the House rule dictates that is also the approval of the majority. So whatever happens now, is the majority will just approve, whatever, okay?
So, madam chair, as an act of legislative courtesy, this matter be purely a matter of, a matter of within the province of the minority block,
Okay.
the majority, and I would like to move, confirms the election of Councilor Ian Atchaz as the new minority floor leader.
Okay, any second? Okay, any second. An objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second. Objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Item number nine, proposed solution number 2024-597.
So we done? Was the voting done? Ah, okay, there is no more election.
No more.
So that was already decided by the entire body. Okay, congratulations, Counselor Ian Atchaz.
Ay, sa'gubulhi.
You wanted to say something? Okay, so, okay. Wanna say something? Okay, so next session, the sitting arrangements will change?
The secretaries.
Okay, okay, congratulations, Counselor. I don't have, I have nothing to do with this. I have been very frank to everybody, especially the media. I do not interfere anymore. So this is now the floor, is a decision of the floor. Okay, thank you very much, Counselor Attorney Edgar Cabalas.
Okay, let's go to number nine. Item number nine, proposed solution number 2024-597, creating another committee, committee to conduct legislative inquiry on the reported illegal mining activities in barangay Tumpagon, another areas in the hinterland barangays of the city, to be composed of the following: Chair, Counselor Roger, Roger Abada, Vice Chair, Counselor, si man.
Si sa man ang vice chair.
I am nominating Counselor Edgar Cabalas as the Chairman of the Gloribon.
Counselor Edgar Cabalas, the vice chair, then the members?
And the members are the Chairman of the Committee, Concerned Committees.
Concerned Committees. What are the committees, sir?
Peace and Order, Public Safety.
Barangay Affairs, Public Safety.
Agriculture Committee. Climate Change Committee, Chair. And what are other related committees?
Okay.
Another related committees to...
And other related committees.
Move for approval.
Okay, any second. Objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second. Objection. I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
There be no other matters, so take off, Madam Chair. May I move for the adjournment.
Session adjourned. God bless us all.